Good evening. I'm Mayor Mark Northrup, City of Hudsonville. This is the Hudsonville City Commission Regular Session dated November 15, 2020. Would everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bolheiss?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
Groth?
Here.
Larrar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Please note there is one Commissioner that is not in attendance. That would be Mayor, Commissioner Tobin DeRie. Before we ask for a moment of silence, I believe you want to...I'll do the moment of silence first. Take a few minutes to maybe contemplate the next hour or two hours we'll be having as a City Commission. There's a lot of things that I know that are on a lot of our minds, the election, those that are elected, our poll workers that work so diligently to have a fair and accurate election. We could have a moment of silence for veterans. We could have a moment of silence for Marine Corps birthday. We could have a moment of silence for the weather and the perils that it brings and those that perished down the Great Lakes. So just take a few moments and contemplate. Thank you. Before I ask for public comments, I believe, Phil, you wanted to make a note?
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we amend the agenda to add that we are going into closed session at the end of the regular session, discuss personnel.
Very well. Is there a second on that motion?
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Clerk, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to public comments, and if there's anybody here from the public that chooses to address the Commission tonight that's not on the agenda, please step forward and introduce yourself. Seeing nor hearing anybody from the public, we will move on to the consent agenda items. There are seven. Minutes of City Commission Regular Session dated October 11. Minutes of City Commission Special Session dated October 25. Minutes of the Terrace Square Advisory Board dated September 14. Minutes of the Library Advisory Board Ad hoc Committee dated October 4. Minutes of the Library Advisory Board dated October 4. Minutes of the Planning Commission dated October 19. And minutes of the Downtown Development Authority dated November 2. Are there any changes to those minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approving the consent and jetta items? I'd need a motion, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes as recorded.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. The roll call, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Moving on to public hearings. There are, I believe, what, there's three tonight? Is that correct? There are three tonight. I'm not real sure if we have people from the...for the public hearing supporting these, other than Dan. Are you here tonight? Dan is here, so he can talk to each one.
Lake Shore.
Oh, Lake Shore Advantage is here, okay. But just for the matter of record, before we start to open the public hearings, the staff, the DDA, and the Planning Commission, and the Act 198 Committee have met extensively on these. We've discussed all three of these a fair amount in work sessions, so I think these should be pretty clear. There are memos in the packet, if you haven't read them, but I think it should be familiar with all the Commissioners on the dais tonight. So we will move...I will ask for a motion to go to the public hearing. I'll move to have a public hearing. Do I got to go to a public hearing first?
Yep.
So let's go to...I will open the public hearing at this time. Is there anybody from the Apex Controls that chooses to address us or Dan? Go ahead.
Thank you. Brian Van Ait with Apex Controls. I'd just like to tell just a quick, brief history of what we...who we are, what we do, and what we're looking to do. We're very excited about some growth. We've been here in Hudsonville for 31 years, our company's history. We provide automation solutions and double electrical panels for companies locally in automation and around the country for panel builds and help with automation. We've grown steadily in our 31 years, but over the last two years, we've grown quite rapidly. We've gone from about 40 people on staff to about 60 people. In the next three to five years, we're looking to continue that rapid growth. We just have a lot of opportunities coming and a lot of things we can do, and we just need people and equipment to help out. So we're looking to continue investing in the company with equipment and some acquisitions and some upgrading our property a bit. We've already started that, so we've moved into the next door building. It was a CSM building. We moved last week. We're working out of that now while we start construction, probably the end of the month, on our regular Apex building, and we'll upgrade the main office part of that, and then we'll be adding some equipment in the back as well and some land work. Yeah, we're super excited to be in Hudsonville and to be able to stay. We're worried with the growth we had. We weren't sure we'd be able to do it and stay in Hudsonville, but we were able to work it out, so we're very happy about that. So, thank you. If you have any questions?
Any questions for Brian from the dais? Brian, before you step down, I answer a motion. I just want to comment. Apex has a tremendous reputation in West Michigan. Had several years of manufacturing, electronics manufacturing in West Michigan specifically, and your control boards and your robotics was well-known in the industry. And to see you grow and bring value to the community and to the industry is noted, and it's greatly appreciated, not just for the City of Hudsonville, but West Michigan and in general for the manufacturing industry, because, as you know, our talent is in being efficient and having good control panels, and we take it for granted. Those of us that don't build them don't get them, but they're really important. So thank you very much. Make sure you understand your staff is very welcome to be a member of our community.
I'll let them know. Thank you very much.
Any other discussion for Brian? I'll move to close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 22-1750, establishing an industrial development district requested by Apex Controls RELC for 3536 Highland Drive, parcel number
Second that.
It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion for the motion or for Brian? Dan, you have anything to add? We're good? Very well. Madam Clerk, roll, please.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number 10, the second public hearing tonight I will open, is on the Commercial Rehab for District for Terrace Square LLC. This would be the...what do we call this property?
Co-op property.
The...
The former co-op property.
Former co-op property, which is no longer there, but the buildings are, so now it would be called Terrace Station. Anybody here from the public chooses to discuss the public hearing for the commercial rehab of Terrace Station, formerly the co-op? Hearing and seeing none, we will close the public hearing. I'll ask for the motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-1751 to approve the Commercial Rehabilitation District for the Terrace Station LLC redevelopment project.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Dan, before I ask for the clerk for the roll, what is the timing on this? Do we have a timing yet?
Yeah.
Oh.
You want to...
Yeah, I didn't...
We're working diligently on the due diligence part of everything.
Just real quick, can you introduce yourself so we know?
I'm Shani Booth with Metacost Development for Terrace Station. We're developing or hoping to develop Terrace Station, but we would hope to, you know, we're moving through the process, which does take longer than we anticipated, but definitely we're hoping for spring, summer, breaking ground. That's the goal. Yeah.
Any questions? We're really excited. I got to tell you, this has been long in the making, and the community is behind you.
That's right. We're very excited as well.
To see that addition on the other side of Terrace Square and Harvey Street continued down through there, and I know you've worked very closely with the Planning Commission and Dan and the staff to have a site that really meets the needs of the city in terms of just the esoterics of it, the looks of it. It's going to be very nice. We're really excited.
Yeah, so are we. Thank you.
Any other questions from the dais? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, roll.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Thank you very much. Motion carries. I will now move on to item number 11, which will be the public hearing on commercial development for the new Scott Gierling's property, which is Tom &amp; Jeff's, right?
Bob &amp; Jeff's.
Bob &amp; Jeff's. Is there anybody from the public that would wish to address the dais on this property? Hearing and seeing none, I will close the public hearing, and I will ask for the motion.
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 22-1752 to approve the Commercial Rehabilitation District for the Gierling's Development Company, Inc. redevelopment project.
Second the motion. The move is supported. Any questions for the Planning Director, Dan, actually, and the DDA Director on this motion? I have a couple for you, Dan. As you know, I would. So this week, or was it last week, we did close in the property, or maybe Jessica will know this, that we...
Yes.
The transfer of the property has occurred?
Yes.
And the cashier's check has been, I assume, cashed and is now part of the DDA's books, correct?
Correct.
How much was it?
$226,100.
$226,100. How long did we sit in that property, may I ask?
Not sure when we bought it, but 2018's ringing a bell, but we sold it for the same price we bought it for.
Good. And Dan, you're smiling because...
Good job, Kayla.
This is a big one that we see coming. It'll be four stories or three and a half stories, and we expect Scott to break ground also in the springtime.
That would be great. He still has one step left with the Planning Commission, so...but his plans were pretty solid already from the preliminary approval, so looking forward to finalizing that so he can move forward for sure.
And we...
It's a great building on the Village Green, you know, key locations, so, yeah.
We have a tracker who's Scott, and he's been...he's done much for the city already. Any questions for Dan on this?
Is this going to the Planning Commission yet this year for that final step? I don't know. Could be early next year. It's up to Scott. And has he said at all when he's going to knock down the buildings? I don't have a schedule.
Maybe when you get the...
Would you mind asking?
Pass it on.
I can ask.
Pass it on.
He's celebrating his 40th anniversary right now, so he couldn't be here. Took off on the plane today.
I know the DDA Chair will be very pleased. He's very pleased. He signed the paperwork, I think, right?
Yeah.
Very well. Hearing no other comments or discussion, I'll call for the roll. Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Larrar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Dan. Keep up the good work. We'll move on to New Business Public Safety, October Public Safety, San Francisco's report for the Fire Department and the acting fire chief. Captain Moore is it? Would that be the correct?
Deputy Chief.
Deputy Chief.
Thank you. Should have the breakdown for the reports. We had 45 calls for service in the month of October. A couple of calls of note, we had a vehicle fire in some green condos, and we also had a vehicle accident at Chicago Drive and 36 where we had to extricate the patient. We had two trainings in October. First training was actually at Pete's Auto Parts for extrication, so training actually proved to pay off very quickly there. Our second training month basically was just used to test all of our fire suppression holes to see what was needed there. And let's see, October obviously is a fire prevention month, so it was an extremely busy month for us as far as the PR events. We had Gemmings Open House on October 1. We helped Georgetown Township with their fire safety night October 6, and then we assisted with the flag display at Hudsonville Football Game. And then we visited four schools over two days, teaching first graders how fire safety, utilizing the trailer that we have, showing around the trucks and such. Finally got to do that again after not being able to do it due to COVID, so it was fun to see the kids' faces again. And then we also had Urban Hay Day. Some of the things we had going on, we had another vendor come in to look at SCBA, still waiting on the grant status there, but we're trying to prepare ourselves if that grant comes through so we know which decisions to make. Also purchased some new software to assist with pre-plans of businesses, inspections. I know Steve already used it a couple times. It's looking like it's going to be a super valuable tool for us. Steve actually attended a two-week class for a Fire Inspector One certificate. He did pass the class, so that's a pretty big deal. I talked to several other people in our industry, and they said that's probably the most difficult class that they've ever attended, so kudos to Steve for getting through that. He also attended Western Michigan Chiefs Conference in the '26. Training was on building construction, reading and understanding smoke and fires and firefighter safety. He also attended several meetings with the other area chiefs out of a county to discuss life EMS. Significant increase in calls in all of our county due to population growth, and obviously life EMS as well. Other AL units are having issues with hiring, so we're trying to figure out how we can work as a county and in conjunction with life EMS to hopefully increase response times for them. And we added one more personnel. We added Cadet Sam Jippen. So both himself and then Melissa, who is a cadet actively, will be hopefully joining out of the county fire academy in January and hopefully be done by July, so we have two new firefighters on.
Any questions for...on the SCBAs, how much is that grant we're looking at?
It's a county-wide grant, from what I understand. I don't know what the total value is, but it's going to incorporate several departments in the area, so that's kind of a weighing on. So hopefully, I think it's going to support to support six departments in the southwest area here.
And how many SCBs...SCBs do we have?
I think we have 25.
And now what is the age of those? You track those ages, and you change out like five every year or something, or?
NFPA standard says 10 years. I think we are at about 15. So I believe it's in the budget to purchase the SCBA, even if we don't get the grant, so we are, like I said, we're just trying to prepare. We've got some really good manufacturers that have come in, so, yeah, we're just trying to sort through that, seeing which ones are going to work best for us. So when that yes or no on that grant comes through, we can then move forward, because obviously with everything going on, it's going to take time to get that stuff to us, so.
Good. Very good. Any questions? Thank you, and have a good evening. Sergeant, good evening.
Good evening. Good to see you all again. Kind of a busy month in October, 194 calls. Some of the things that's been going on for October and part of this month as well is we've seen a really big increase in mail thefts, especially the last couple of weeks. Zealand Township Hudsonville, Jamestown, Georgetown. I bet we've had over 100 cases of stolen mail.
County-wide?
That's just those areas.
Wow.
Usually between 2:00 and 5:30 in the morning with businesses. So the gist of it is they're grabbing all the mail in the mailboxes, take it all, open it all, find checks either sent to the business or being sent by the business, and they wash those checks and they get cash in some other state. So there's lots of educating that we're doing with our local businesses as far as letting them know, don't put checks in the mail, go to the post office. Don't have a mailbox, go to get a post office box. We're doing a lot of that kind of stuff. It's pretty...it's multi-stage what's going on, so we're working very diligently on trying to find that. So we've had an uptick in, especially the last couple of weeks as well, with some unlocked cars going in. People getting into...we had four of those last weekend, so it's starting to pick up a little bit. Why, I don't know. Maybe holidays are coming. And we just started the last week putting warnings out on cars that are parked on the roadways between 2:00 and 6:00. So just for you guys that live in the city, some of our night guys have no idea what your names are and who you are, so make sure your cars are parked in the driveway, because otherwise you're going to get a $50 ticket. So the warnings are out, but the next one to come is tickets, so just keep that in mind. And again, just I put in my report just thanks to Patrick for 12 years of service here. It's been fun getting to know him while I worked here and enjoyed him having him here, so...any questions at all?
Jeff, have you heard any more about the 196 date of completion?
It is...well, the completion date won't be in front of the year, but...
Till it's back to normal for the winter?
But westbound is open, and they have about six or seven miles of those cement barricades that they're starting to move for eastbound. It's one at a time with one crane and a flatbed truck. So they started in Zealand, and they're heading our way. So it's going to take probably a week or two for them to even get all those out. But westbound is open. I drove with the other day. There's still no way for us to get turned around, so we have to go all the way to Zealand to come all the way back, so.
And the entrance ramp by the Buick dealer is open now? The westbound entrance ramp?
It is.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions or discussion? Thank you, Sergeant. Dave, I hear up.
All right. Just a few things I'd like to highlight from my report. First of all, great news. We added two more people to my department, so Bill King and Leslie Vanderwoody. They both come with great experience. Mr. King, he has worked with Otto County Emergency Management for several years and stepped out of that for a little bit, but then retired from his day job, and his wife told him he needs a hobby, so he called us. And he enjoys their emergency management. It was a great opportunity for him as well. And Ms. Vanderwoody, she practiced emergency management in the Air Force and the National Guard, so I'm looking forward to learning a whole lot from her. So, yeah, we're very happy to have both of them on the team. Urban Hay Day, want to clarify? I made a note there that we identified one area where some minor assistance would have been good. It's basically just helping the hay rider make a turn onto Allen Street, I think it is. So we'll put a person out there just to stop traffic for them, so it was nothing major. The haunted car wash, that was popular. There were...and I'm interested in knowing if any of you heard from any of your constituents. Okay, that's good, because we had traffic backed up for a ways for Friday night for pretty much the entire duration, 7:00 to 10:00. Saturday night, most of the duration around 9:00 o'clock, we thought we were done. Apparently halftime in the Michigan-Michigan State game was a little bit after 9:00 because we got another rush of cars stopped. And they told us that was halftime. We thought we'd get a car wash. But if you do hear any feedback, please let me know, because we really need to take a look at how we're going to do that next year. Once the road diet is put in place, that's going to affect where we have, you know, how much we have to stack cars. And we were backed up on the southbound side, we were backed up easily to Vandeleer and the high school, and we heard sometimes up to Chicago Drive.
Was there a permit on that?
It was a traffic control order. I don't know. Did they need a permit of any sort?
They did. They gave that request.
Yeah, they gave that request.
It wasn't your thing last year, it wasn't?
Last year, we thought it was no big deal. This year, we were significantly busier.
Okay.
But anyway, yeah, let me know if you hear anything.
So like goblins and spooks and ghosts and...
Yeah, they black out the windows in the car wash, and they hide in there, and they jump out at people and everything, and even on the way in, they're trying to scare the kids and all. Pretty popular.
That's kind of clever. Any other questions for Dave?
Discussion.
Thank you, Dave. Keep up the good work and good work on getting two new employees.
Thanks, Sergeant.
That's great. We'll move on to item number 16, payment of the bills. Nope, I'm sorry, we got to go to the financial auditor. Oh, 13, traffic controller. You don't get...I think we get too much behind here.
Some of them might point out, don't help. You bring lights down.
I was preparing for the special session.
Oh, okay. Okay, so that's why we're off here. Okay, so let's move on to traffic control order, item number 13. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve traffic control order Number 22-03 for closure of Allen Street from 32nd to 36th, Cherry Street from Allen Street to Chicago Drive, Harvey Street from School Avenue to Plaza Avenue, School Avenue from Chicago Drive to Allen Street.
Second the motion.
The move is supported. What day is this one?
This should be Saturday night.
This is this Saturday night, and all of us...
For the parade, right?
And all of us are going to be there, correct?
We haven't gotten any information yet. Where, when?
I did send a text earlier in the week.
Yeah, you sent it out.
Yeah.
I did send a text earlier.
Meant at the Hudsonville Bus Garage entrance, I think.
So we can talk about that at the end. You have anything to add to that?
No, I just want to make sure just in case you have any questions.
Okay. There's a motion. Any other discussion? The move is supported. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Larrar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bolheiss?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes. I look forward to everybody being there Saturday. Moving on to the Financial Auditor's Report, Gabriel and Company.
So I will try to be brief, because it looks like you've had a nice, busy meeting today.
We always like a very dull financial report from the auditors.
I was actually at school yesterday, and I scared half the crowd off right before I went. So first off, I would like to congratulate you on getting a unmodified opinion. You should expect it every year. It's what you should expect to receive. It's not guaranteed, but if you don't get that, you'll be hearing from the state and a lot of other issues. So congratulations on that. Besides that, we had no internal control deficiencies over financial reporting or any other control deficiencies that we noted. No deficit fund balances and no budget deficiencies, which is always great to be able to say. So obviously you guys have been monitoring your budget and your funds, your reserves. A couple of the main highlights, the city's fund balance across all funds at the end of the most recent fiscal year was $4.2 million, which was roughly a $2 million increase. The general fund ended with roughly $3.4 million. The general fund ended with roughly $3.4 million, which was an increase of $1.7 million, of which 1.8 was unassigned, which is approximately 41% of the annualized expenditures and transfers out, so that's a pretty healthy fund balance, I would say, for, for cities, for outer-sized cities. Part of that large increase in the current year was due to the purchase of the co-op property, and that's shown as non-spendable in the general fund, so it does look like a large increase, obviously in future years you have the payment back out for that, that property, so. Next page is just comparative over the last five years of the fund balance, as you can see, it's kind of grown over the last couple of years in a pretty stealthy increase, healthy increase, with a large increase over the past year that's gained due to that property, just with some of the quirks of governmental accounting, when you issue debt, it increases your fund balance, so. On statement net position, this is a comparative of this year and last year's balance sheet, the biggest change was a almost $3 million, $2.5 million increase in the cash reserves, partially due to the ARPA funding and I believe you also had an MEDC grant or MDA grant that was also unearned revenue, so funds you have that you just haven't spent yet as a grant. So that led to a large increase in, in the cash reserves. Land held for sale also increased with that property in the general fund with, for the co-op. Once again, you see that unearned revenue significantly increased over the, the most recent fiscal year. Besides that, it's also nice to talk about in a couple of pages, but the net pension liability also continued to decrease. Next page is just comparative income statement, just showing the changes in revenues and expenditures from the most recent fiscal year and the prior fiscal year. Overall, revenue stayed pretty steady with slight increases in property taxes and the state revenue sharing, which is what we've seen across the state with most of our clients. Operating grants and charges for services kind of have been fluctuating, as we've seen with all the grant opportunities and the timing with all the CRF, ARPA funds and all that, so those have been a little, little crazy over the last couple of years. And then once again, expenditures were down overall due to that decrease in the net pension liability, these are the full accrual statements, so there's some changes there overall, your actual cash in, cash out expenditures stayed pretty steady year over year. The last slide I was going to talk about is the net pension liability, once again, over the last five years, you've gone from 72% funded up to 85% funded, so over that whole time period, you were above the state's minimum requirements, which I believe is 60% funded for the pension and 12% for your ADC, so you're, you're well above that, so you have to worry about filing a plan with them on how you're going to become not what they determine as underfunded. So I think the state's ideal goal is always to have people above 80%, so it's great to see above 80%. Obviously, the pension is measured as 12/31/2021, which is first fiscal year, so there's a little bit of a lag there with the investment return, so next year, depending on how this last month and a half goes, I would kind of expect that to trickle back down a little bit, but not severely, so. It's always, always great, I had one township where I got to tell them they're the worst-funded township in the entire state. So, so thank you for not being one. Besides that, it was great working with Kayla once again, she was well-prepared and made it easy for us to complete the audit, so.
That was a great report. Any questions for the auditor? Kayla? Once again, thank you, good job, and we are fortunate to have your leadership in, in our Treasury Department. I will ask for a motion to accept the audit report. Finance Committee?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit report as presented by Matt Holland.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
I missed this one on my sheet. Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, thank you and well done. Moving on to the city treasurer's monthly report, thank you. Kayla?
Okay, so we will start with the general fund summary report for the month of September. Overall, percent of budget, we are at 52.9% of our budgeted revenues, and for our budgeted expenditures, we're at 27.74. So again, that looks really good, most of our collection comes in the summer months because of property taxes. So our revenue summary, so for the month of September, we collected $150,370. It's a big drop from August, but that's because property taxes were due August 14th. Revenue to date, that just brings us a little bit over $3.2 million, which is very good. You can see in the expenditure summary that we expensed out $156,882, which is less than the last two Septembers, but you can tell that in August, we spent more, so it's mostly just the timing of the bills and of the checks that went out. So our expenditure to date, we're at 1.9 million, a little bit over that, but still within 27% of our budgeted expenditures. Any questions on those reports at all? Okay, we'll move on to the investment report, so for the month of September, we had a CD expire, it's the one at the very top, First National Bank of America, it was at a .60 rate of return and I was able to go ahead and reinvest it at 4%. So rates are good, we're going to, they're still staying high, the Fed is expected to do maybe a few more rate increases, trying to control inflation, but that's actually beneficial for our investments, so as these lower rates start falling off, I'll continue to do, lock us in in some higher rates. Overall, for the month of September, we brought in $8,224.78 in investment interest, and our annual average rate of return was 1.61, so that will start hopefully increasing fast. Questions on the investment report?
I, I have one, a couple of questions for, for Kayla in general. Are we seeing any activity on the interest in the White House on 32nd? Have we?
I think there's been a few showings over the weekend, yeah, I was able to get onto the Realtor portal and just kind of see the showing's history, I think people love the house, it's a great house, I think they're nervous about the new road.
Because that's, that represents 300,000 back to us or thereabouts, we hope.
Yep.
Any questions for Kayla on the treasurer's report? Then we will move on to payment of the bills, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $623,077.3, and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the finance committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion on payment of the bills? Hearing none, roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, pay the bills, moving on to item 17, ACH fund distribution, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to confirm the funds distributed via automated clearinghouse in the amount of $115,093.28, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. It's been moved and supported, any discussion? Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Nitre?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, moving on to item 16, appointment of interim city manager, is there a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Kayla Garcia as interim city manager for the city of Hudsonville until, until a new city manager is hired.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported, any discussion from the commissioners? I'd like to comment that we are fortunate to have your temporary leadership in the executive role in the city hall until we get a suitable replacement for Patrick, so you have support and we're looking forward to having you in that role, so thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, we will now move on to item 17, city right-of-way land exchange, is there a motion?
Make a motion to adopt resolution number 22-1753 approving and authorizing the vacation of the city's rights and interests in certain real property in connection with the city's Village Green Improvement Plan.
Second motion.
It's been moved and supported, Dan, did you wish to speak to this at all? I did not call Ken Jipping this morning, but it sounds like this is just an easy transfer, Jessica's been working this for a long time.
I just talked very briefly how we met, you just, you know, addressed some concerns he had, you know, just sort of better communication moving forward, but either way, at the bottom of, the bottom line is he supports doing this, and so, we have his support, so that's good.
Jessica, anything you want to add to that?
Nope, so this, actually, this negotiations began back in 2019, so this deal's been brewing for actually before my time, and this is just a land swap, and it's pursuant to a purchase agreement that was entered back in 2019, so this actually vacates the right-of-way so that this can occur.
Any other questions from the commissioners? Hearing none, I'll call for the roll.
Commissioner Groth?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries, Dan, thank you for, this has been a long haul, and Jessica, thank you for all your legal expertise on this land swap, so I know it's been a long time in the making and it's just one more piece for the eventual city green.
When would it open, Dan?
What's that?
When would it open?
When will it open?
With the roadway open or is it open? I didn't go.
It's open now.
Is it open now? Okay.
Just opened, so it helps to frame the Village Green, it's kind of nice actually from Ken Jipping's property, and I can get a better idea of how big that will be and where it will be. So yeah, that's, that's a drawn image that Ken Jipping had made, so it's kind of a nice snapshot looking down below from above his property.
Very good, thank you, Dan. Before I call for a motion to adjourn, I will just go down the dais, Dave?
Looks like our fire representative left, but as a parent of first grader, grateful for the fire safety training that was done.
Very nice. Saturday night, 6:30 at the bus garage entrance, correct?
No.
No, it's at the 4:30.
I did find it.
Yeah, but the pre- isn't until 6:00, right?
Yeah, so you can't get there at 6:30.
Oh, yeah, duh. I meant central time. How early do you want us there? Who's in charge? Uh, you know, I sent a text out last week, I talked to Lindsay. Correct. I think they're going to start staging everybody at 4:30. 4:30, they're going to start staging, so, as my understanding, we bought out the Myers candy shelf, so there's lots of candy. Sweet, literally, sweet. Yeah. It's always a fun time. Reminder, be there. There'll be snow, I'm sure there always is. That's it. Jessica, anything else? Larry?
Nope. I won't be there, I'll be thinking about you from the great white north.
Where are you going to be?
Up north.
Oh, you're going, I thought you were going to-
No, I leave tomorrow morning for the Packers game.
Ah, okay, and then you're going on a Caribbean cruise?
No, that's in a couple of weeks.
So you are going on a Caribbean cruise?
I am, but not this weekend.
Julie, anything, anything else from the department, is in the audience?
You want to make that other motion then, or we could do that after?
After. Real quickly, for the commissioners, I think it's important you hear this, I had a long conversation this morning with our DPW supervisor, Bob, you probably know that we have some staffing concerns there, we've had some resignations for people leaving for higher-paid jobs, not necessarily because of any cultural issues with, with the city, but he's at a point where we may need to look to have some services that may not be fully met, and I've asked for him to write a memo to the city commission via the, the interim city manager for him to discuss that in more detail for December. I think it's important, we're aware of that, if we're not going to be able to have the kind of service, staffing to support the services for the community, and here again, it's an issue right now that there's, there are more jobs than there are candidates to fill them right now, particularly those kind of jobs are more entry-level and hard jobs. Lindsay, our new marketing director starts-
Thursday.
Thursday, everybody knows Lindsay, I think she was here at city hall for several years before she left, and now she's coming back and we're looking forward to having her. And finally, the HR manager, Andrea, is also back, she'll be joining us here shortly for maternity leave, and it's good to have the staff starting to fall back into place. We still have a couple of vacancies, and I know we're working very hard to fill those. Anything else for discussion briefly? Hearing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I, I move to adjourn this meeting and go to a special closed session pursuant to MCL 15.268A and MCL 15.268H to discuss personnel issues.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, any other discussion?
That needs a roll call.
I need a roll call, please, thank you.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Groth?
Yes.
Bullheist?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries, we are adjourned.